Okay, we all ready? You ready, Lady Loney? I'll call the study session of the City Council for May 27, 2008 to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rosansky is absent.
Okay, first item under current business is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner, Councilman Curry, Councilman Webb, Councilman Hen.
I have none.
Mayor Prokchembaga.
Okay, I have several. On number five, the city attorney isn't present, but I'd be interested in her outline in terms of how the slurs have affected this particular property and if there would be any effects in the future in terms of the previous property owner having any controls over the design in City Hall. So I'd be interested in being further informed on that. And then number nine is the Go Local study with OCTA, and we're going to be looking at the demand between JWA and MetroLink. And there's been some angst at the Aviation Committee over, you know, any attempts to sort of bring in San Diego or other areas. It would seem as if, I know the mayor regularly attends these meetings as well, that there's some concern that we just really wanted to focus on the scope of the study, and that is looking at MetroLink between John Wayne Airport, or the path between John Wayne Airport and MetroLink.
And Councilwoman Legel, if I may address that, the OCTA grant specifically conditions us to only study within county, the transport of passengers within the county. So while this may be a later phase of connecting some dots to see how we could move people who are using John Wayne Airport now to outlying airports, this study will not look at that issue. It will just look at the county use of the airport.
Okay, great, I appreciate that, because the underlying concern is that dots get connected back to John Wayne in terms of all the transportation. And then also on number 22, it's a reclassification in human resources. Apparently there's a manager on leave, so it's a temporary problem of which you're proposing a permanent management position. And when you read the report, the director seems to be saying that you don't need two permanent managers, so I was curious, has there been any attempt to sort of look at a more temporary sort of a solution?
When we say we don't need two managers, I think what we're saying is that we are running so many recruitments now, and based upon the number of recruitments, 177 over the last fiscal year, as opposed to where we were a few years ago, that we really need to basically have someone overseeing the recruitment process, because we have two full-time people, we have some part-time people that are involved in that whole thing, and the level of recruitment is just so high that we really need to put our arms around it and make sure that it is coordinated. And we have a person doing that now, because another person is on leave. It is working out real well, and we think that that is the best solution for it. When the other manager comes back off of sick leave in a couple of months, she will be doing the same thing that she was before, with the exception of overseeing, or being the supervisor of the HR recruitment.
Okay, so there's going to be a HR recruitment supervisor that's going to a manager, and then there's another management position that you're intending to keep?
Right now, I have the two manager positions. I have the risk manager and the HR manager, and the HR manager is responsible for a lot of things besides recruitment. And recruitment has gotten so large that she hasn't been able to spend any time on our training, on our performance evaluations, on our everything else that she does, labor negotiations, the MOU implementations, dealing with employee relations issues, any problem employees, dealing with supervisors, all the employee counseling. And Lauren and I have been picking that up while she's been gone. And then we've had the senior analyst that has been totally running the recruitment. And because of the volume of recruitment, she actually has to spend, she spends full time just meeting with the part-time people, meeting with the department directors, making sure the tests are valid, do things that our manager just doesn't have time to do. And it's just working really well, and we thought that maybe our recruitments wouldn't continue to grow. I think two years ago, you approved part-time analysts, and it's worked out great having part-time, but they're still there, and we've increased 100% in the last like three years. That just, you have to have someone over it, or, and that affects our service to the public, because if we can't get those tests done and we can't get new employees hired, and we have such a turnover, that the terminations and the new hires are just phenomenal right now, and they handle all of that paperwork for that. And we just need a full-time person to do that.
Okay, and I understand some of the recruitments are drawing a really staggering number, as many as 400 applicants?
400 applicants, so we have to give a written test, and we have to rent space. We've been using the Costa Mesa Community Center. The costs are astronomical, our recruitment costs have gone up tremendously. Yeah, we've had recently the permit technician, the building inspector, the management analyst, the department assistant, that have drawn hundreds of apps. We have firefighter right now, and we've got 400, almost 500 people going through that, and it's just the volumes and coordinating everything. So it really isn't a temporary fix. It is a fix that the city needs, as long as our recruitments continue like they are.
Okay, I understand that. What your reports seem to indicate, though, is that when the other manager returns, that you may revisit that position and how it's structured.
I think we'll let it, when the, I wasn't sure what was going to happen with that position. When she does return, I did just get a letter from her, she is going to return, we'll re-look at that and look at the duties and make sure that it's properly classified. I think it is. I think that we have enough. She would be doing all the reclasses, all of the, you know, responsible for all of that, where she was responsible for everything before, and it's just too big, it's too much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have no items. Second item on our current business calendar is the Department Budget Review.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into that, I just wanted to let council know that it was my intention to cut off this study session by about a quarter to five, in order to make sure that you got into your closed session by 5:00 o'clock, and would have two hours in order to deal with those closed-session items. And I think Dennis is going to start us off, because we have a little leftover information from our previous study session when we started into our budget review, so I'll turn it over to Dennis.
Thank you, Homer. As City Manager mentioned, at the last study session, we were requested to put together reconciliation. As you recall, from our presentation, our expenditures exceeded our revenues, and the question arose, what was, what caused that? And we were asked to put together a brief reconciliation. So that's really the purpose of this slide.
I've been informed that I've been officially relieved of my duties to turn off and on the lights, and that that will be done by our audiovisual people, who apparently aren't ready to do it, so I think I'll do it.
Good job. Okay, briefly. This slide may be a little bit hard for the public to read, but I think you have copies in front of you. We're roughly talking about a $32 million difference between our budgeted expenditures and our budgeted revenues. Primarily, that's made up of, the largest portion of that is $24 million, which our expenditure is not supported by revenues, and that has to do with our facilities replacement plan. So you can see from the slide that we have Lifeguard Headquarters Need Assessment of 150,000, Police Facilities Need Assessment, 330,000, Sunset Ridge Park, 800,000, that's for design and EIR documents, New City Hall Design Fees, a little over $3 million. And the largest one, of course, is $20 million for the Oasis Senior Center. We don't know where all that money's coming from, but we have a pretty good idea that the city has pledged $10 million towards that project. We believe we have $5.6 million in development fees, and in fundraising efforts of a little over $4.4 million. So it's not all-
And also, there's been a pledge, two announced pledges, I believe, totaling $3 million.
Great, that's good news. We also have some other funds, Ciosa Fund, Major M Fund, Circulation and Transportation Fund, and these are restricted funds that primarily the revenue was received in prior fiscal years. We've been saving those monies up for projects, and that's a little over $4.5 million. And then we have another category of about $3.2 million. It's made up of accelerated enterprise CIPs primarily related to Balboa Island and those type of projects. So if you add up all these numbers, it's the $32 million figure, which is the difference that we indicated between revenues and expenditures. So I'd just be glad to answer any questions you may have.
And Dennis, just to move along those same lines, I mean, we do have a reserve for our major projects, and I think you told us last time that that reserve would be up to, is it 16 million?
No, I believe it's the reserve for capital facilities replacement. It's up to about $23 million as part of this budget.
Right, so the point of this is, although the budget nominally is not balanced, it's because there are expenditures that have yet to be really committed to, and that there will be sources to fund those expenditures when and if they come.
That's exactly right.
Okay. If there are no further questions regarding that, we ready to move into the Department Review? And we will proceed in the same order as they are listed in the budgets before you, and the City Council Budget is the first one listed. And Dave Kiff is going to walk us through the City Council, and when we come to the City Manager Budget.
Thank you, Homer, Mr. Mayor, and City Council Members. I'll try to go through these relatively quickly, so as Homer noted, I'll cover two, the City Council Budget, your budget, and the City Manager's Budget. So basically, you'll see just a little bit of a proposed change. It goes down a little bit, in part because of some of the spheres issues, or it will be less needed than in the past couple of years. So we're proposing a budget of a little bit over $1 million. And just as a flavor for the kinds of things that are in this, your budget included is any type of dues payment that the city would pay because we're enrolled as a city, such as SCAG, such as the League of Cities, the Orange County Division of League of Cities, these come out of your budget. I want to talk a little bit about the council grants that are already included in the budget, just so you're aware of them, including the Balboa Island Historical Society, the Balboa Island Improvement Association. You see the amounts here on the far side for the CDM 5K, the Christmas Walk, Leadership Tomorrow, we're a sponsor there. We're also a sponsor of the Film Festival at a level of $100,000. Newport to Ensenada Race, 15,000, and the Orange County Marathon at 50,000. So that total is 216. If there are any questions about that, I'll move to the City Manager's Budget.
I just have one question. The, I understand the Restaurant Association is going to be asking as part of the budget for a grant for Restaurant Week again. Is that going to be in here if we add it to the budget? Is that where that'll be?
It would be in here eventually, if you add it to the budget. It would be for your consideration. I think those items will be coming to you at the next study session and the next meeting, those requests. I just had an email from Peggy Fort today who said that she has not yet gotten her letter in to us to provide to you, so I'm not sure what that number is going to be. You might have a better indication of it than I do.
And those typically appear on your budget checklist.
Okay.
And that appears with the bid funding, or is there a base amount of bid funding that's already in the budget here?
The bid funding is already in the budget. It isn't in the council's budget, I think it's in the economic development budget.
Economic Development, so there already is some money budgeted for the Restaurant Association, because it is a bid, right?
That's right.
Yeah, so it would be a supplemental request.
For the Restaurant Week, yes.
Okay, then the next part of your budget is the City Manager's Budget.
Excuse me, Dave, what's the capital outline for $7,000?
Usually, we set that up for computers or related needs, if you have anything like that. Oftentimes, as you can see, we typically don't spend it unless you folks need a laptop or something like that. That's usually what we spend that for.
We get laptops?
You don't get one. Every now and then, there's a need, so that's what that's for. But you can see the expenditures in the past years have been pretty low, especially in '06, '07. I don't think we're going to expend it all in the estimated budget for the current year.
Mr. Mayor, we intend to go over the budget reviews of the departments, including yours, very briefly, just to highlight them. So we'll spend as much time as you want answering questions or providing you the detail. I think the message that staff has heard recently is, you know, make these crisp, point out things that you're doing differently, and move these reviews along.
So the next one is the City Manager's Budget. You can see where we're going from about 4.2 million total to 4.4, 4.45, and I'll explain kind of how that division is made up. We have basically three divisions in the City Manager's Department, in addition to Sharon and Homer and myself. We have the Code and Water Quality Enforcement Division. We brought that over because Sharon and I were working so much on water quality and code enforcement, we thought it's appropriate that we directly oversee it. So that has six full-time, .25 full-time equivalents. Harbor Resources has been within this division since it was spun off from the Fire Department about six years ago. There are eight full-time employees there who, in effect, again, manage the resources in the harbor, mostly focused on permitting, dredging underneath private docks, making sure someone who comes in with a dredging project is appropriately presenting that and helping them through coastal. They also look at more regional issues with us, including the lower Newport Bay and the Upper Bay dredging. I'll speak to that in just a second. And then finally, the Public Information Division is within this. Those FTEs under these sections, those are mostly parking lot attendants and tide pool rangers. We have a lot of people who do that, they don't work a lot of hours. Similar with Public Information, these are our camera crews that will come in and just do work for a brief period of time, and we switch those out between different folks. So major accomplishments and challenges, I think, for the past year, establishing the group home ordinance, completing the customer satisfaction survey, annexing West Santa Ana Heights, and then we helped coordinate the Marina Park Project. Other projects are parceled out to Public Works and other places, but I helped coordinate that one. Major challenges ahead, the City Hall and Park Design Project, it's a wonderful challenge. Looking forward to that coming to fruition. As you know, from, if you're looking at the newsletter, we had 51 different firms submit qualifications to compete in the design competition, which is pretty exciting, from all over the nation, including international. Of course, a looming challenge for us is implementing the use permits for group residential uses. As you know, as the folks at home, as the folks at home know, we had an important week last week, when everyone who was supposed to file for a use permit for a group residential use either did or did not, and you'll be talking about that a little bit in closed session. I won't get into it much further. But it does show that at least the ordinance's implementation is going to take some time, and it will be a challenge here in these next couple of months, as we really ratchet that up, with the expectation of hearings this summer.
Dave, may I ask, I had asked that you have one more look again now, in light of the number of permits filed and whatnot, as to whether or not it was necessary to perhaps reinstate some originally intended resources for code enforcement. Did you have a chance to look at that again? Are you still confident that without those additional items that were dropped out last time around, that you'll have enough resources?
I'm confident that we can do this, Councilmember Hen, with the dollar resources assigned. What I'll be able to do is move some from the legal fees over to the planning fees, with the understanding, too, that a lot of these are recoverable fees, where the applicants charge a fee that we draw from. I'm not comfortable saying either way about staffing. I need to really look and see what those conditions look like, so if I would, I'm comfortable, at least in saying today, that the staffing plan going forward should meet our needs, but I want to reserve the right maybe to come back to you with that challenge, with the understanding that I think they'd be contract folks, just for a short period of time, to make sure we can get a handle on enforcing those conditions of the use permit.
I would just encourage you to err on the side of getting the resources, you know, sooner than you think you might even need them, just to make sure that we're in good shape, especially with temporary resources, you know, so.
And possibly, Councilmember, by the time of your next meeting, the first meeting in June, because all this did happen last week, I may have a better flavor for it, working with Homer and with Dennis, to come back to you next week.
Okay, well, I'm glad to reserve judgment on that, then. I did have one other question, and it has to do with legal resources, which is a sort of combination between the City Manager's Budget and the Legal Department Budget, but I don't see in either place very much money for handling the litigation that we're involved with, which could run into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Am I just missing that, or is it not a budgeted item yet?
Well, Robin came in just at the right time, so maybe between Robin and Lauren, we could answer that.
Did you hear that question, Robin?
I did, I did. The way the, we have worked out for next year's budget to handle litigation expenses is to have the hiring of Defense Counsel occur through the Risk Management Office, so they have budgeted for those expenses. And that would be limited only to expenses that were, for claims that are made against the city that involve a claim for damages. So if it's just a plain, straight writ that's asking for a court to take some sort of an action, but not a claim for damages, then my office has, excuse me, would have that defense cost in my budget. But Lauren would be handling all the others, and the reason that we did that was because sometimes a lawsuit will integrate both a writ and a claim for damages. For instance, something like an inverse condemnation, or a civil rights due process, or a regular tort claim for damages because somebody was injured. And those types of claims usually run through risk manager, there's a claims adjustment contractor that handles those claims, does investigations, and also, the risk manager needs to be made aware of them, because a lot of times, we'll have to put the insurance company, our insurance companies on notice. So that is where the significant litigation that we have right now with the Sober Living by the Sea would be handled, and those defense costs would be paid for out of the risk management budget.
Okay, so we've got three lawsuits and two HUD claims, or something like that. I'm going to lose track. And so, the Sober Living lawsuit, the Concerned Citizens lawsuit, and there was another operator that filed against us. Who was that, Dave? Pacific?
Pacific Shores.
Pacific Shores. Those three defense costs are in the insurance manager's budget, then?
Yes.
And then what about the HUD claims?
Well, the HUD claims, at this point in time, the same attorneys that are handling the lawsuits are also working on the defense of those HUD claims, working with our office. HUD claims can result in fines and penalties, so that would be another lawsuit or another type of a claim that would result in a monetary, potentially could result in a monetary judgment against the city. So those would also be within the risk manager's purview of handling those costs.
Okay, well, maybe when we get to risk management, we can shine some more light on that. Okay, thanks.
I'm going to jump through the next couple. This Code Enforcement Division, you could see what they, we believe are accomplishments there, especially, I'm hoping everyone's proud of our proactive residential property maintenance program, which has done some really neat things on the peninsula, especially, including the refuse abatement program, which is new. Then challenges for the future-
I would have to just comment that I'm sure that you are doing a thorough job, because I've had two or three friends of mine ask me about that, who got citations.
Hopefully, they were pleasant about it, yes.
They were, and they got an explanation for me why that's important.
Okay. And then, major challenges, we do have a new water quality permit that all cities get that should be rolled out next year, so we'll be back talking with you about that, but not for several months. We don't know that it's a cost item. Moving on, just quickly to Harbor Resources, the major accomplishments this year, as you folks were able to approve a rewrite of Title 17. This is the way we deal with harbor permits. It may seem like a minor thing, it was very significant administratively, because now we can enforce all those rules. We started the Harbor Area Management Plan, certainly looking at the Upper Bay project as a challenge, and then, of course, we lost our, to retirement, our Harbor Resources manager. So those are some of the major accomplishments, including an eelgrass discussion with National Marine Fisheries. Major challenges, TOPS is the Lower Newport Bay dredging project, and being able to hopefully secure some funding here in this coming year, along with addressing a toxicity that, of a material called a pyrethroid, which will be challenging to get the Lower Bay project done, but we're moving full steam ahead on that. Funding the rest of the Upper Bay project is important, too. Hiring and training new staff, continue our eelgrass discussions, and then working on an issue the grand jury looked at, and that's the transferability of moorings. Any questions on that one? I'll move to the next and final.
Dave, with regards to the moorings, has there been any further feedback from the grand jury? And, I mean, just generally, where are we with sort of the, what we're doing with those mooring fields?
The overall issue is back in our court. The grand jury has been quiet with us in allowing us to sort through the remaining issue. Remember, we did go ahead and look at better ways to realign the moorings, and they've looked at each one of those and have proposed good realignments. The issue that's still hanging out there is transferability. Can a person who controls a mooring transfer it to someone else without it reverting to the city temporarily, and the city could potentially give that to the waiting list? We're discussing that next month, actually, very shortly, with Robin, to go over Robin's ideas, and then we'll take that forward to you fairly shortly.
Just to highlight, what I have done is the, there was a Harbor Commission Subcommittee that worked, I believe, with some of the interested stakeholders in the mooring community, and they came up with a recommended action that came out of the Harbor Commission, and the council received a presentation on that proposed system. They had drafted up kind of their own proposed regulations. What I've done is worked with staff at a staff level of going over those regulations to make sure that the spirit of what the Harbor Committee and the Harbor Commission came up with and recommending, so that that spirit and that process is continued. But I'm looking now at making some final changes to the language so that it's clearly written. And so that's the only thing we're really waiting for, is me to take the time to go through and finish that process up, and then we'd be meeting with them next month.
Lastly, the last division is Public Information and Video Communications. We feel the major accomplishments, including updating our communications plan, which you approved just a couple of meetings ago. There's a new Staff Communication Committee that's formed and is working hard under the direction of the Media Communications, which is a committee, which is a council committee that Mayor Proktem Dagle chairs. We did indeed transition over to, fully to our control rather than Time Warner Control on our operations, and I think as a result, we enhanced programming from that. So challenges include meeting all the different programming demands in a sensible way while keeping our per-program costs. We don't want this to blow out of proportion to the PEG revenue, the Public Educational and Government Revenue that we receive from cable for this purpose. And then certainly, it'll be a continuing challenge, but a doable one, to achieve the goals in the communication plan. With that, counsel, I'm done with this, these divisions, and unless you have any other questions, we'll go to the next one.
I hate to backtrack on you, but under the City Council's budget, I didn't see anything for the Sister Cities Association. Where does, has that been dropped, or is that part of the Newport Ensenada piece?
I think I get to punt to Homer and Dennis on that one.
Yeah, it's in this, in the council's budget. Where in the council's budget would be the correct?
Oh, it's in arts and cultural within library? Okay, so you can make sure it's there.
Just wanted to ask what it was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just note, a lot of tremendous amount of progress and really challenging issues, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, and City Council Members. I am pleased to present the fiscal year 2008, 2009 budget for the City Clerk's Office. The City Clerk's Office staffing remains status quo with one city clerk and two deputy city clerks. There is no proposal for any staffing changes. Since the City Clerk's Office is a service-providing department, the budget is primarily allocated to salaries and benefits, with a small amount budgeted for maintenance and operation costs. The core services include providing services to the mayor, city council, city manager, administrative departments, and the public. We are responsible- We are responsible for the preparation of the agenda, agenda packets, transcription of minutes for all city council meetings, and are responsible for the processing of all ordinances and resolutions, which includes the codification and distribution of about 55,000 pages of municipal codes. We process all claims and summons, process all contracts, which includes the handling of all notices of completion, bond releases, and recordation of documents with the Orange County Recorder's Office. We scan all permanent documents that are maintained in the City Clerk's Office, and we maintain the following information on the City Clerk's webpage: Boards and Commissions Manual, Council Policy Manual, City Charter, Municipal Codes, City Council Agendas, Staff Reports and Minutes, Ordnances and Resolutions, the monthly meeting calendar, election information, passport processing information, citizen participation information, which pertains to the boards and commissions, and campaign disclosure documents. The budget for the upcoming 2008, 2009 fiscal year is $414,666, excluding the $100,000 for the 2008 general municipal election. This is a $27,000 reduction from the 2007, 2008 estimated budget. The City Clerk's Office generates about $8,000 to $10,000 in revenue from the processing of passport applications. It is estimated that the office will process about 300 passports this year, and the city receives $25 per passport. The State Department has reduced this fee from $30 per passport. The City Clerk's Office does not have any significant expenditures. The 80-80 account is $8,400, which includes codification of the municipal code and storage of vital records off-site. For fiscal year 2007, 2008, some accomplishments include training a new staff member, conducting the February 2008 special election, and updating the City Clerk's webpage. For fiscal year 2008, 2009, our goal is to improve records management through the knowledge gained from the benchmarking process, and to conduct the 2008 general municipal election and campaign filings. One upcoming challenge deals with the retirement of City Clerk Harkless at the end of the year, and the office reorganization associated with having a new city clerk. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions counsel may have.
Counselor. Dennis, I see here in the '07-'08 column, elections of $42,000, but didn't we just approve a $108,000 item that'll increase that amount?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you, Leilani.
Human Resources Department is next.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to come before you today to talk about the Human Resources Department and our budget. We don't have any major changes with our budget as we have the last few years, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about what we do and what some of the things that we've accomplished this year. And we've already talked a little bit about our department and what some of our challenges are. So, oh, let's see. Oh, there we go. Our mission statement is that we deliver innovative and timely human resource services and leadership, enabling the city departments and employees to provide exceptional services to our residents and visitors. We're the people behind the scenes that help our departments to provide that service to the public. They call us a strategic department when we're doing our benchmarking. We are one of the strategic departments that help the departments provide that service to the public. If we can't fill those positions, or if we have low morale with the employees, it does affect our service to the public. We handle services for approximately 830 full-time, 400 part-time, and 400 retirees, and that's getting to be quite a job with the retirees also, and all of the benefits, and with the new program, that's gotten to be quite a job also. Our budget here, as you can see, we're a little bit less than last year. It's real close. Our large expense this last year was our recruitment center that we thank the council so much, and the city manager, we appreciate it. It has made a tremendous difference. We house two full-time and three part-time, three full-time and two part-time employees over in the recruitment center. And just recently, for instance, with the firefighter applications, we've had 500 people going in and out of that office with applications. And so it's really helped us, and it's helped the city hall staff to be able to work a little bit more efficiently without all the confusion around. I don't know how many of you have been over to see it, but it works very well, and we thank you very much for it. What we do is we partner with departments and employees to hire, compensate, support, and develop a workforce that is dedicated to delivering high-quality services to the community. We continue to provide the tools and training needed to keep current with employment-related laws, and practice minimizing the city's liability in employment matters. We work closely with the city attorney's office. There's been many legal rulings, things that we've had to deal with this year. There's been changes to the Family Medical Leave Act that we've had to change our procedures. There's been a recent court case where we can now not, no longer do drug testing for pre-employment, which we're not too happy about, but we've had to comply with that. There's been the firefighter bill of rights that we're still now working with some legal consultants on trying to figure out how we're going to deal with that. So there's some major legal changes that we've had to deal with this year, but we're trying to come up with some new procedures and policies to help our departments.
Barbara, I missed that. Employers are not allowed to do pre-employment drug testing?
Right. It's a new, ninth court.
Is that public employees, or all?
Public, just public.
Public employees?
Right, because it conflicts with our right to privacy. It's a shame.
The ruling deals with having a connection for the need for the drug testing, so it's something that takes a little bit of time. It just came out, I think, about a few weeks ago, so we're going to, we need to spend a little bit of time to advise under what circumstances we can and what circumstances we cannot. The situation for the drug testing, in a particular case, was an employee that they couldn't connect up the need to have the drug testing. So we'll have to come up with new procedures for when we can and cannot do the drug testing.
Does this ruling apply to private employers?
You know, I don't know yet. I haven't had a chance to look at it fully.
I heard that it did not, but the court case was a library page, and that's what, you know, they work with children, there are libraries, and they said that we cannot test them. Now, our safety-sensitive positions, of course, we will still be able to test, but we're still working on that with the attorney, and, but we have stopped doing that drug testing.
Well, I don't think we've completely stopped.
They are appealing it, they are appealing it.
Yeah, we haven't completely stopped. We just need to make the nexus between positions that really can legally be screened, and positions such as a page at a library that maybe it's hard to make that nexus.
Truck drivers, it's easy to make the nexus.
We think so.
I would think.
Yes.
You would think. People driving, yeah.
Well, you've got DOT behind you.
We've got the DOT, right. So, anyway, some of our challenges, of course, recruiting and retaining the high-quality employees in an increasingly competitive job market. I've talked to you a little bit already this afternoon about that. We just, it's just unprecedented number of people applying for jobs, and I think that the economy, the people out of jobs, the building industry, just everybody's applying for these lower-level positions, the non-professional positions mostly, some of the lower-level It's just, and so we need to accommodate them, we want to hire the best person for that job. We have to find a way to screen them that's legal, and so we're giving more written tests. As I said, we're running the Costa Mesa Community Center and doing those written tests and screening them down, so, and we do have limited staff. We do have temporary staff, which works out really well, because they're people who don't want full-time, they have children, they're happy working part-time, and they're great employees, and we're real happy to have them. So we're able to accommodate this, but I don't know what's going to happen in the future. We kind of thought it would start slowing down, but it's actually gotten worse, or worse, yeah.
Barbara, in the operations portion of your budget here, which is the one that showed the significant increase, there's $95,000 in there for prof tech. Looks like, it looks like recruiting, I'm sorry. And so that's supplemental outside help with the recruiting process?
No, actually, for instance, the firefighter exam we're giving, there's a $10,000 cost to that. For instance, if we go outside for one of the executive recruitments, it's probably $25,000 to $30,000, and we think we're going to probably be doing that. It's, also tuition reimbursements have gone up tremendously since some of the MOUs have changed, and we're doing a lot of tuition reimbursements. Our employee service pins have gone up 10,000. I mean, every little thing adds up, but it's mostly recruitments. And the test we gave recently for management assistant, it was a $4,000 cost, and that is in staff time. So there's a huge cost to recruitments, and that is what most of our increases are. Some of our other challenges, this relates to recruitment, too, providing faster service to departments. As you know, no department wants to have a vacancy, and everyone's vacancy is important. And so having this recruitment and selection supervisor has been really great, because she's been able to coordinate them and to be able to get, to organize it so that everybody gets their positions filled. Before, we had our part-time temporary people helping us, we actually had to put a freeze on recruitments, and we weren't able to do them. But the city manager approved some temporary, and then council subsequently approved that, and it's worked out very well. We haven't had to freeze, but you only have so many staff, and can work so fast, and so I think that the recruitment staff is doing a fabulous job, and I, we don't get any complaints on that now. So considering the volumes, it's been great. Some of the other things that we haven't been able to spend as much time on is training programs, succession planning. It's real great to get employees on board, but if you can't keep them here and they leave, you've got retention problems, and there's a cost to that, too. And we need to, and when our manager comes back, that's one of the things that she's going to be concentrating on, is staff planning, succession planning, training programs, employee development, things such as that. Providing sound, efficient selection practices with huge volumes of candidates. Some of the creative things that our senior analyst has come up with to help us to accommodate all these people using an outside place to give exams, so we're not giving 10 exams in a row, so we can do everybody at once. Just making a few little exceptions that don't break the rules, but kind of are more customer service oriented. So those are some of our challenges in HR. Our department is organized.
Barbara?
Mm-hmm. Hi.
Our own community, the Newport Coast Community Center's not large enough. Costa Mesa's bigger than ours. Is that why we're using Costa Mesa?
Right, and we tried to use ours, but they don't have the room, or they've got classes going on, and, you know, we've got 300 people we're testing, so, yeah. It would be nice. We have the Human Resources Administrative and Operations. This is our HR manager who has been out on medical for, these are all the things that she is responsible for. Recruiting is just one tiny part of that, and so it'll be nice to be able to have, when she comes back, to have her concentrate on the other things that are so important. And it's the MOU administration, the PERS, the PARs, coordination, employee relations, personnel policies and procedures. As these new laws come up, we need to have procedures, because we need to do things consistently, or we're going to get discrimination problems. So we're working on that. Our other section is, of course, our risk management and employee benefits section. Lauren's in charge of that, and I know you talked about the attorney's fees for that, and Lauren is prepared to talk about that. It's not in this budget, it's in the internal funds budget, so that isn't going to be talked about today, but she said she could talk to you about it if you had questions on that today. She has a staff of 3.5. Because recruiting has gotten so heavy that we only have one clerical person in our department that's full-time, and so she's moved over to the recruitment center, that's all she does, is recruitment. So Lauren's section, the risk management section, has no clerical support. So we have a temporary person, and this is the third year I've asked for that regular position, and it's the third year we haven't, and I do appreciate that we can't have new positions, but we still have a temporary person that, over the last five years, we've had a temporary person, we've had eight temporary people in that position, and they're the ones dealing with confidential issues and the employee, the employee records and everything. And we get some good people, but then somebody else hires them away because they want benefits. And it really isn't that much more expensive to make them regular, but it does put another full-time position on the payroll, so, anyway.
Question for you, when you get 400 people applying for a job, what's kind of the due process that the field can be narrowed so that, you know, maybe you don't have to test everyone? I don't know what you're doing, but, you know, how can you sort of, I guess, manage recruiting in a way that, you know, it isn't so enormous? Are there ways to do that?
Yes. Thank goodness for the NeoGov system that we implemented. Everyone applies online. If they don't, we scan it in, it's all online. We actually screen them online. They have to meet the minimum qualifications that legally have to be the minimum qualifications for the job. Everyone that passes that has an opportunity to compete. And so that's why we used to just screen the applications, and, oh, they're most qualified, they have an extra year, they, there's too many apps to do that, so now we give a written test, and we take the top candidates on the written. If it's a clerical, we send them for clerical testing, we take the top candidates, and then we do an oral. So it's very competitive, and I don't know how we would be able to pick and choose who would be able to compete in a fair process. But the NeoGov system is fabulous, and we can punch a button and send 400 people notices saying, "Come to the test." We used to send them letters. So it's, the departments can screen the apps right online, it's, they can look at the people that applied. It's a real, it was a lifesaver. So that's how we do it, and it works pretty well, actually. Anyway, then, that's the risk management and employee benefits section. The HR recruitment center, we're so proud of that. We opened the new offices this year, 4.5 employees working over there. Recruitments have increased over 100% in the last four years. We never thought it would happen. We knew it was going to be bad, but we didn't know it was going to be this bad. But we're handling it, we've got a great staff over there, and this is actually our little chart that shows the total recruitments. In '05-'06, we had 88. We expect 177 this year, and we don't see them decreasing, so.
And Barbara, I was thinking today, looking at FY '06, the 88, I mean, that was probably some of the 3% at 50, you know, coming online as far as the police. If you'd go back further years in '04, you know, '03, I imagine the number would be much smaller than 88.
You know, I did look at our newsletter, I looked at it where we have 29 recruitments, and I looked at it in '03, and we had seven part-time, no full-time. So that's a pretty big difference. And the last, we have an increase in service indicators, and I didn't do what all the service indicators were, because you have that in the rap, and I thought it would just kind of go on and on, but some of our main increases, tuition reimbursements, transactions, new employees, those are the types of things that have really increased this year. So, and our little motto, our mission is your success, Human Resources. And I would be happy to answer any questions on my budget, and then I want to talk to you a little bit about the reclasses that are in the budget that Homer asked me to cover.
Just one quick comment. Lauren must be feeling pressured these days, because she's predicting a fairly significant increase in general liability claims and workers' comp claims. I am assuming that that's just because you're looking at historical norms, or do you, is there some particular reason why you think our exposures are higher going forward?
No, it's usually just a matter of kind of trends. We have an average below the average, and we get more specific if we find the category first by one of the types. What we've done in the past, and I know you've seen some reclasses come up on the council agenda, and I have one on the agenda for today, we used to just, we would do the study, first of all, someone, a department feels as though they need to have us look at a position, and some of these positions people have been in for a lot of years, and they've changed a lot, and then the people leave, and before we go out and recruit, we want to check them and see if our salary's okay, and I think we just did that recently with the purchasing agent that was vacant. But what we've done in the past is Homer has approved those, and then we bring them to you with a budget, and we usually, it's just included with a budget. Homer asked me to tell you what those were this time, because we're now taking them to council, and we wanted you to be aware of it.
Barbara, let me make one thing very clear, just because we do the reclass study doesn't mean it's going to be approved.
Oh, correct.
Homer wouldn't approve those, unless the recommendation was that there was something different.
I'm sorry, he's recommending. I'm sorry, yes. Right. So anyway, these are ones that Homer's recommending, that we've done the study, we recommended, he looked at them, and there's only three of them, and the funds have already been included in the budget. So the first one is HR specialist, HR analyst. This is out of the recruitment center. We have our one full-time specialist who, and our part-time people are analysts, and she basically does the same thing, except she's the full-time person that actually takes the lead in a lot of the projects. So we felt as though it was right that she be reclassified to an analyst, because she works the same level as all of them. It's not a very big cost, but it means a lot to the department. The next one is business license inspector. They would like to have a business license supervisor in administrative services. This is Glenn Evero's section. He feels as though the revenues will offset whatever that costs. And the last one is the fiscal operations manager. We're recommending a salary increase to the level of the other managers in the department. Dennis has several managers. He's got the IT manager and the finance officer, and then he's got a fiscal services manager who supervises quite a few people and has quite a bit of responsibility in that position. who supervises quite a few people and has quite a bit of responsibility in that position and has grown a lot. And she's just paid a little bit less than the rest of the people and he feels as though she should be paid comparable. So those are the three reclasses.
Any questions on the reclasses?
Ms. Farber, if I could just say one thing in order to back up something Barbara said a few minutes ago, that, I, I think the largest pain I had in going through the budget information and what I would recommend to you was two positions that I did not recommend. One was asked for by Barbara and one was asked for by Dennis. And I, I was trying to be very meager in terms of what I came to you with, in terms of new positions and what we ended up is adding one position, I think, because we are deleting three positions. But it wasn't based upon the feeling that we didn't need these positions. I have added a number of positions in human resources over the last three to four years and I just felt like I didn't want council to think that each year it was another position with HR, even though the volume of work has grown, the number of, you know, recruitments has grown tremendously, that we'll just try and, and keep it together. But I, I think these two positions, a strong case was made for them. So it really falls on my shoulders not to recommend them to you, even though I felt like there was a strong case for, for doing so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, I, I think it's probably worthwhile to comment that it appears to me, though, that the human resource department has done a pretty good job implementing new systems solutions to the online benefit enrollment.
Right.
That's new this year, is it not?
Right. Well, this is when we enrolled last year and then we've got the employee access center that's been moving.
Yeah.
Online paperless paycheck.
Right. So.
A lot.
Yeah. Those are good initiatives and I encourage you to keep going with that kind of thing.
The city attorney budget is next.
Okay. Thank you, mayor and council members. My budget is, in the past, I think my budget's been pretty much quiet and consistent and I usually haven't had much to report or request, but this year's budget's a little bit different. The, last year's budget, if you'll notice in the 2007, 2007, 2008, the budget is particularly the maintenance operations, which includes the professional services. The 80-80 budget was quite high in this last year. That is related mostly to the outside expenses that were added due to a budget amendment, which was for $165,000 for the council's desired initiative to work more proactively on finding a solution to the eelgrass situation out in the council harbor. And another council initiative, which was the IBC, the litigation for the Irvine Business Complex. Also, the additional initiative for dealing with the group homes issues. Those issues all basically attributed to the high outside council expenditures over the year and the general expenditures for the usual things that I had in the past hired outside council for on a, kind of a regular basis, when I needed outside assistance for something, was only about $100,000 over that total expenditure for this last fiscal year. The rest of it went to those other initiatives and, and expenses. Of the, of part of that, the IBC expenses, we did receive half of the amount of expenditures, which was, the total was about $352,000 in the last fiscal year, was reimbursed to us from Tustin. And also there was some funding that went to some of the other expenses that we had that we got reimbursed through settlements in the IBC. So this year, in anticipation of some potential initiatives, we've asked for particularly high outside council budget, but as I will go into the staffing levels, I anticipate and hope that that would be reduced significantly. The outside buzzle, outside council budget of the $488,000 includes anticipated additional expenses that we think could occur with regards to the eelgrass and that would be somewhere between 50 and 100,000 with the outside council and the experts that we're using. A, the increased code enforcement, I've asked Homer and he's, for supplemental, for $150,000. And that would be to hire and we've been interviewing, finding an outside firm to be very actively working and interacting with the code enforcement staff so that we can have a more increased outlook for code enforcement in the sense of criminal enforcement when it's appropriate, civil enforcement, inspection warrants and assisting code enforcement on making sure that they know what to look for and how to do their own investigations. So that would be included in that concept. There's also going to be some continued Irvine Business Complex, need for outside council to prosecute that, although I don't anticipate or I don't know yet whether there would need to be any further litigation. As the council knows, we did prevail in the Superior Court in the action against the city of Irvine. It's my understanding that they intend to appeal that. And so the question would be that we would need to continue to monitor the projects that they might approve going forward if they choose not to comply with the court's order that came out of the most recent litigation. Then on a personnel basis, I am the only attorney in the office at this point in time that had the background and experience in dealing with personnel legal issues and so I was doing most of the work with the human resources department for issues like advisory issues like discipline and the firefighters and the employee manual. I had reworked the office so that Donna Beege, who is a part-time deputy, would take over those duties and she was doing a pretty good job until she got very ill recently and we anticipate she probably will not be back until September. And so we will need to probably hire another outside attorney because my time was getting caught up and I wasn't able to, to spend the time that HR needed to get that advice, particularly on issues like the new case law that came down with regards to drug testing, the firefighters' bill of rights and those sort of things are one of the costs and expenses we'll have until Donna gets out and/or until when I get to the next item with the new position that I'm asking for. I have a handout for the council. Pass that.
Sure.
And there's extra copies here if anybody wants one or a copy of it. This is my proposed staffing changes and the only difference is to go from one assistant city attorney to two assistant city attorneys. The rest of the staffing would remain the same. I think that in the last year and going through and trying to divvy up the amount of work that came into the office and the demands on the office, we were looking at how to best handle both the demands and of my time and then my review time of all the litigation and the issues that the council comes up with, plus the city attorney, the assistant city attorneys need to deal with the, the departments and advising them on all the various issues that come up, both in the daily management of those offices and their requirements and also the different departments and their efforts to achieve and work with the city manager on achieving the council's priorities. So in that circumstance, I looked around and started looking at some other offices of similar sizes or, or cities that have, that are located on the coast, that have their own in-house council staffing. And I noted, and particularly with the conversation I had with the city of Orange city attorney, that, that they can be most efficient with the assistants at the higher level of experience. This is somebody that has many years of experience and is very capable of doing the day-to-day advisory work, reviewing contracts and, and, and code enforcement and that type of recommendations to the different department heads in a way that the city attorney can rely upon them and not have to have so much attention paid to the issues that come up. So the first sheet of paper that I have for you gives you my concept of how that workload for the different departments would be split up so that the city attorney would be dealing with directly related advice, dealing directly with the council on questions that they have related to advice, contracts that they are interested in, ordinances that they need. So that would be the city council, the city manager and the city clerk. My time would also be devoted to dealing with the city clerk on election issues and then being responsible for advisory and litigation oversight over the, to assistant city attorneys or any directly related department heads and working with outside council. And then what, what I worked with Erin, the current city attorney on, was figuring out a way to break up the demands of the departments so that one attorney would have department and department head level advisory responsibilities that would be equal. So for instance, one would have the direct related advice for, for advisory, contracts and drafting ordinances for administrative services and various departments. They would be responsible for administrative services and more importantly, it'd be good to have somebody and look for somebody that has personnel experience and then that way they could relieve me of a lot of the duties that I have in trying to deal with outside council and also relieve the need to hire outside council to deal with the personnel issues so that human resources would be getting more direct advice for all the departments. So they would be handling all discipline issues and personnel issues. And then the assistant city attorney, the second one that I have listed here, is pretty much where Erin's strengths are. And so he would be dealing with the community development type provision, type departments including, and also including general services and utilities and fire and police and then also doing some litigation oversight. So that was the basis for my request and I think that as that goes on, I, the, my, my goal is, and I believe that with this staffing levels, the amount of time that we need for outside attorneys, except for a special initiative, for instance, like a IBC litigation or the group homes issues, that the outside budget should go down quite a bit. And like I said, last year, it looks like we only spent about $100,000 on outside budget that wasn't a special initiative. I also provided for the council an idea of, where I got this idea of two assistants from and this is some other similar cities that all seem to have one or two, I mean, two or three full assistants at that higher level. And then the staffing, the depart, the top, part-time attorneys and the paralegal and the office staff would then all be the backup assistants for all three of the assistant and, and for me. This gives the council a little bit of an idea of the type of work demand that we have in the office that's not specifically project-related. And it seems like the project-related issues that I'm anticipating in the next year will take up most of, of my time. And so the deputy and the paralegals all work on issues such as Public Records Act request responses. We had over 90 last year, contracts review, contracts preparation. We had approximately 50 contracts that needed almost 20 to 40 hours of time in negotiating and drafting and working with cap, with staff. So that's the demands for the office. And then this goes through, just kind of the summary of some of the high-level time demands. There was quite a bit of time devoted to revising Title 17. The city now has a brand-new Title 17 harbor code update. The only thing remaining, which I haven't had a chance to get to as we spoke about earlier, was the mooring regulations and getting that cleaned up. My initial efforts and Kathy's initial efforts and working with, coming up with legally defensible zoning code amendments, the Newport North zoning implementation agreement we completed and tonight on your agenda, you have the final action on the Newport Terrace Gas Recovery System, which was a six-year long-running project and we've been able to solve that issue and the Marina Park Mobile Home Settlement and that issue was resolved. This next year, I, I see a lot of issues that are going to be coming out and we're going to be working closely with staff on the zoning code, the implementation of the LCP, the group home ordinance, even though we're not directly involved in it, we are doing quite a bit of time is being taken up in supporting the outside council and their efforts, the city hall development, the eelgrass policy, working on that and, and then dealing with all the different departments and their needs for making sure that the council gets the support it needs on, on the priority interests for them. And that's all.
Any questions?
I just have a comment on something else. There's a class outside that, they had sent me an email months ago about coming for public comment. And I don't know whether they all want to comment or not, but maybe somebody could go out and find out a bit about what we're looking, anticipating.
In the meantime, going back to that litigation expense thing and the internal service funds, I, I don't need a detailed explanation right now today, but if somebody can send me an email or just point it out to me where it's, and I haven't gotten to the internal service fund budget in detail yet. So maybe it's obvious in there. But if somebody can just make sure it's obvious to me, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks, Sharon. Okay, Dennis?
Okay. We'll go through administrative services quickly. Our mission statement is to provide prudent financial management of publicly entrusted resources and deliver the highest quality of financial information, technology and related support services to city officials, the public and other departments in a cost-effective manner. This is really the heart of our budget for 2007, 2008. Our budget was 7.9 million for 2008, '09. It's 8.1 million, an increase of 2.6 percent. You'll notice the number of employees did not change, 56 full-time and 6.42 full-time equivalents. As part of the cost of services study, we went through division by division and, and actually allocated our time to find out how much we were spending on each activity. I won't go through all of these, but we have five divisions. First one being resource management. That's where I live and Dick and Kathy. You can see what we spend our time on. Total of $538,000. Fiscal services, that's Louis Thompson. Things they're responsible for, central cashiering, parking meter collection, which was something we took on about two years ago, accounts payable, all the print shop, purchasing, warehousing, et cetera. That's about $1.9 million budget. The information technology division headed by Paul Malkamas, 17 full-time employees and, and a part-timer and responsible all, for all things computer throughout the entire city, except for the efforts made in the police and fire and library. They have some of their own IT staff. Revenue division is Glenn Evero, 12 full-time employees, 1.6 full-time equivalents, budget of $1.5 million. Some of the things they're responsible for include licensing, receivables and collections, adjudications, contract administration, revenue audits, et cetera. And then our last division, it's the accounting division headed by Dan M. Staffing, eight full-time employees and 1.5 full-time equivalents. This is, as, as both Barbara and Homer mentioned, we did request one new position for this division. That was an accounting position. Just like every other department, our workload has increased tremendously over the past few years. You can see that this division's responsible for general ledger maintenance, all the city's payroll, costing research analysis, budget preparation, auditing, financial reporting, grant administration, et cetera. And again, I'd be remiss to say that I, I believe Dan did make a good case for an additional position here. I understand the fiscal realities, but it was one position that we requested and that was an accounting position. Some of the significant revenues that we're responsible for include all the water billing, sewer fees, fire medic program, recycling fees, franchise fees, $7.7 million in use of money in property. Our four largest tax sources are, of course, property tax, 77 million, sales tax, 23 million, transient occupancy tax, a little over 13 million, and business license tax, almost $4 million. That totals $117 million that we monitor. That's 76.6 percent of the total general fund, estimated revenue of $153 million. These are some of the charges and fines we collect, including parking citations, administrative fines, alarms, title billings and many others. This is a, may be hard to read, but we're responsible for the debt, administration of the city. It's a. fines, alarms, titling billings, and many others. This is, may be hard to read, but we're responsible for the debt, administration of the city. It's going down this year, the water bonds will be paid off this fiscal year. Some of the audits and reporting requirements that we're responsible for, of course, we have an external audit of all funds by our auditors. We prepare a conference of annual financial report, which is audited by our outside auditors. We have a single audit, gas tax audit, AQMD audits, OCTA audits, TDA Article III audits, Department of Justice audits, and of course, brand-new MERC plan audit. Special reporting includes grants, Department of Justice, Office of Traffic Safety and SLEF, CDBG, Newport Bay dredging, our annual street report, library certification, asset forfeitures, et cetera, et cetera. And then the last one, the bottom one, ILJ reporting, is something that we're responsible for, and it's grown tremendous, that's grown tremendously over the last couple of years as well. Lastly, I'd just like to mention our best benchmark initiatives. We have three of them proposed as part of this budget process, and the first one concerns the budget. We will deliver a meaningful annual operating financial plan that provides long-term sustainability, flexibility, and stability through preparation and monitoring of the annual budget and related documents. Our second initiative concerns information technology, where we will deliver automation solutions and communications services to all city departments, the city council, and members of the public by consolidating, developing, and maintaining a dynamic, progressive, service-oriented information technology system. And our third initiative regards purchasing and purchase ordering. We will develop and maintain a dynamic, service-oriented procurement system to deliver the supplies, services, and other resources needed by city departments to meet their missions. I know I went through that very quickly, so, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor Protem Dagel?
I understand you've made very conservative projections concerning our revenue and not counting our chickens before they hatch. Appreciate that. And within those projections, you haven't included any additional revenues that could come out of fee increases?
That's correct. That has a potential of $5.4 million. Of course, I don't think all that will be adopted, but you know, it's up to the council's discretion, but that's the potential $5.4 million. It is not included in the budget.
Okay, and that would be the general fees, but not, and harbor fees would be separate from that. Separate and potentially all that.
That's correct as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Dennis, the salary numbers in total for administrative services went up, I think, around seven and a half percent. And it seemed to be mostly related to the IT department salary increases. Was that because of the reclasses that you, that we talked about not long ago? Didn't we do some reclasses?
Some of it was, but that seven and a half percent seems excessively high because a few people got reclassed, maybe three or four. No, but you're exactly right, Councilman Hen. That does primarily relate to the reclasses that were approved by the city council. It also includes, you know, the normal things like step increases and MOU changes.
And the normal situation where you budget as if you had all positions filled 100% of the time when, in the prior year, that probably wasn't the case. It tends to exaggerate the percentage increase in salary to begin with across all departments, but that one just seemed to be a little unusual.
That's correct. We do budget as if the positions were filled 100% of the time.
Then, you did have also, going the other way, though, a pretty big drop in your maintenance and operations expense. It's almost a 16% drop. And I noticed that one of the significant aspects of that was a drop in the prof tech line item. And so can you elaborate on where your operating expense decreases are coming from?
I believe that's primarily due to the one-time cost of services study that we prepared in the current fiscal year. That's not an ongoing effort. And it also included the benchmarking effort, that we didn't budget anything for in the new year. That's money that's encumbered. If the council decides to go through with step three of that process, which is the benchmarking performance evaluation, then we would come back at that point and ask for funds to fund that, and you know, that could be.
So that'll come back as a budget exception item, rather than try and anticipate what the cost was?
That's correct.
Okay. That's it. Any other questions?
Well, actually, I did have another quick question. Sorry. I noticed in the line items here for departmental efforts for IT, you've got developed implementation plan for data replication and off-site storage. I was thinking that we already do that. Is this a new plan, or what's?
No, we already do that, and as part of your action tonight, if you approve it, we're actually enhancing that effort for off-site data storage and backup. But certainly, we do that now.
Okay, so there's no big special initiative in perspective disaster recovery planning associated with that. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Dennis.
Mr. Mayor, do you want us to go through with the next department, which would be police, or do you want to go out of order and?
Well, it might be better to go out of order and do some public comments at this time. Did you have anything you wanted to say, Councilwoman Gardner?
I got an email a couple of months ago, I think, when we first started, and talked about whether they wanted to be on the agenda, and I said, "The nice thing about public comment is, you don't have to, if you're not ready, you don't have to come that particular night, and you just come when you're ready, and when public comment starts, you make your comments." So I'm looking forward to hearing from, this is Mariners Elementary.
Okay, and I understand we have four speakers that are going to speak three minutes each, so come on up. Be sure and state your name before you start speaking.
Honored members of the city council, hello and good evening. My name is Cleo Harrington, and I am a sixth-grade student at Mariners Elementary School. As members of the city council, actually, tonight, I'm going to address you as citizens of Newport Beach. This is because when you go home, you are not at work anymore. Instead, you are with your family. Raise your hand if you have a family at home right now. Good. I bring this up because family is very important to me, and I'm sure it is to you too. And when I found out that they were being harmed, I was not happy. I am here to address a serious matter that has been frightening me ever since I started research on it. That matter is styrofoam. Yes, a regular serving dish, bathroom cups, and to-go boxes. Something that used to be so simple is now our earth's biggest nightmare. On Earth Day, our class decided to try to ban styrofoam from Newport Beach. Little did I know that styrofoam was such a huge problem. When our student teacher, Rebecca Westover, said that she needed a volunteer to be a class rep, I immediately wanted the job. Not so I could make a difference sadly, but so I could be important and noticed. But that was all about to change. The first day on job, my fellow classmates brought me information that both startled and alarmed me. That's when I said to myself, "We need change." And then I thought, "And we will." After that, our little project took off. We were on our way to victory. Now you may think that styrofoam isn't all that bad, but you don't know how wrong you are. Every time you use it, you are harming yourself, other living beings, and polluting our world. How are you harming yourself, you may ask? Simple. There is a deadly toxin in styrofoam called styrene or polystyrene that the IARC, International Agency for Research on Cancer, says causes cancer, upper respiratory problems, nerve tissue damage, and much more. Now are your thoughts different? I sure hope they are, because nobody deserves to die because of not knowing. On May 12, 2008, I came to school and sat down to eat my lunch. More kids consuming styrene, I thought, and sighed. Then I looked around, and instead of eating off styrofoam, they were eating off cardboard. "Yes," I yelled, "we did it." And the rest was a flurry of activity, saying thank you to our cafeteria, telling our teachers, telling students, "We did it. We changed." Because of our letters to the school board and much more, it changed our school for us. Both Hawaii and San Francisco have banned styrofoam, so we can too. There are other alternatives, and we need it. We need change. And to have change, we have to have you. It's all up to you now, so please help us. We want life. We want change. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Honored members of city council, my name is Nick Allen, and I am in the sixth grade at Mariners Elementary School. I am here to talk to you about styrofoam. Almost all of us use styrofoam every single day. On every school day, I buy lunch from the cafeteria, and the cafeteria used to use styrofoam trays to hold the lunches. I have been going to Mariners for seven years, so according to my calculations, that's 1,470 days that I have used styrofoam, plus I have used styrofoam cups all throughout childhood. The effects that styrofoam has on your body are unbelievable. First of all, styrofoam takes 300 years to decompose, and that's a long time for styrofoam to just sit in our landfills. Also, there's a substance in styrofoam that is called styrene. Styrene is, can be a very deadly, excuse me, can be a very deadly substance when exposed to it. Styrene causes lung cancer, nerve tissue damage, and many more. It's not like banning styrofoam is the impossible. Our, our school program has stopped using styrofoam trays and started using cardboard trays for the lunches, so that way, students do not, cannot be harmed by styrofoam. Places like Hawaii and San Francisco have already stepped up to the plate and banned styrofoam from their areas, so I don't think why, so I don't see why we can't do the same. I don't want, I'm sorry. In conclusion, I don't want styrofoam in my body, and after hearing this speech, I don't think anyone else does either. This is why I strongly believe we should ban styrofoam from Newport Beach.
Thank you.
Honorable members of city council, my name is Alexandra Palmer. I'm a student at Mariners Elementary School. I'm here on behalf of our school and to talk about styrofoam. Styrofoam has a deadly chemical called styrene. Styrene is a substance used to make styrofoam. This is not good for our bodies. The EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, says that if you use styrofoam, you can get cancer, upper respiratory problems, and nerve damage. Many people are dying because of these deadly chemicals. This will be my last year at Mariners Elementary, and I would like to leave knowing that Mariners Elementary is not only a great school, but a safe one too. I am not just speaking for myself, but for the class as well. We want this to change, and not just our school, but Newport Beach also. Styrofoam is very bad for our bodies, and we're using it every day, not knowing what dangerous chemicals that styrofoam contains. This is not healthy for us here at Mariners Elementary and the citizens of Newport Beach. At our school, we are using cardboard trays now. When I first heard the news, I was very excited. We succeeded, but then I thought, then I thought about my friends and family, and that they do not know this, and they are, that are at other schools. They are consuming styrene, and they don't know what harmful things they are putting into their bodies. Then one day, I was shopping with my mom, and I found something that we can use that is environmentally safe. It is called Earthshell. It is made from corn, limestone, and potatoes. Earthshell looks and feels like styrofoam, but it is the safer way to go. Both Hawaii and San Francisco have banned styrofoam, and I would like to do the same with Newport Beach. I hope that one day, Newport Beach will be styrofoam-free. This is our chance to change. Please help us make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable members of the city council, my name is Bella Ramondi. I am 12 years old and a sixth grader at Mariners Elementary. I'm here to talk to you about a very serious and disturbing situation, styrofoam. I know what you're thinking, styrofoam? This is not that important of an issue to be talking about right now. There are much more important issues today. We are living in a time where gas prices are too high, there's an important election taking place, and a war in Iraq. These are the big issues that are dominating our daily life. But styrofoam is a really very serious situation that must be addressed. I am here to talk to you about it today. I could talk to you about the environment, and what styrofoam does to damage our planet, but I will not. That is not why I'm here. I want to implore you to listen to me when I speak to you about the health risks styrofoam poses to children, children like me. Styrofoam is made with a chemical called styrene, and styrene is extremely dangerous. I bet that about everybody in this room uses styrofoam at least once a day. Maybe you drink from it or eat, maybe you drink from it or eat off it. But I bet you didn't know that when someone eats or drinks off of styrofoam, that there is styrene in their system. And here's what you should know. Styrene can cause these horrible illnesses, liver tissue damage, upper respiratory problems, and cancer. You, ladies and gentlemen, can choose right now, as adults, not to drink your lattes out of styrofoam. But did you know that children like me eat our lunches and dinners off of styrofoam? We do not have that choice. Schools and restaurants use styrofoam every day to serve meals to children, which is really dangerous. My parents walk me to school every day, make sure I'm safe, know who my teacher is, make sure I get picked up and taken home safely. They feel comfortable during the day, because if they're not with me and protecting me, at least they know I'm going to be safe. They do not think when I'm eating my lunch, I am ingesting a very dangerous chemical, styrene. Kids who eat and drink off of styrofoam every day are increasing their chances of getting the illnesses, liver and tissue damage, upper respiratory problems, and cancer. I want to ban this human carcinogen from all schools, but more importantly, I'm here to ask you to ban styrofoam from all of Newport Beach. Let's follow other smart cities like San Francisco, Oakland, Seattle, and Santa Monica, to name a few who have banned this toxic product. Let's work, let's work together to save our environment and to keep the public healthy. Do this for yourself, your family, and the children of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very impressive. Congratulate all the speakers. You certainly made your case most eloquently. It's obviously something you've done a lot of research on and have a lot of passion for. And I'd also like to congratulate the rest of the class for taking the time to come down here and let the city council know your feelings on this subject and get involved in your city government. So congratulations, and thank all of you very much.
It's also fortuitous, because this evening, students from Newport Harbor High School are going to be here to make a plea. And just last week, the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee of the city passed a resolution urging the council to ban the use of styrofoam in Newport Beach restaurants, and that, we'll be discussing that tonight. So even though we didn't plan it, the planets collided tonight, or this afternoon, so thank you very much for coming.
Timing is everything. Thank you very much for coming.
If you kids want to stick around for some really exciting budget presentations, you're welcome to do that.
Okay, with that, we can move on to the, was it Police Department next? Chief Klein?
We need to amend their budget for styrofoam enforcement, it sounds like.
Actually, we don't use styrofoam at the building. We changed about a year ago after one of the other class presentations. But that's going to be a tough act to follow, so it's going to be easier following Dennis, but that didn't happen. Not that you're boring, they're just, they're pretty exciting, had pretty good presentations. Thank you. And before we get into the budget, I want just, this March, my first year as police chief, so I want to talk about a couple of accomplishments we made at the Police Department this year. You know, we tried to reach out to the community quite a bit, more than we had in the past. And a couple of significant issues we dealt with were the, some of the issues down at CDM that this time last year were unsettling for the residents. So we worked on the enforcement over there, also the camera project, making sure that we got the beach closed, and as well as some commercial enforcement issues in Newport Coast. On the peninsula, we dealt again with the camera issue and some of the same issues, but more quality of life issues. We dealt with the disturbance advisement program that we had in place, but we're not fully utilizing. In the last year, we've utilized that, and it's been very effective, dealing with some of the party houses. We've got pretty positive feedback from the community, both in the CDM as well as the peninsula, about our actions. And I believe some of the community has come to the council and expressed those, that opinion. Crime-wise, we're doing well. Last year, our Part 1 crime, which is our most serious crime, was down 5% over '06. And this year, for the first of the year compared to last year, our residential burglaries are down 57%, which is pretty significant. Unfortunately, Newport Beach is a target-rich environment. There's plenty of property here. It's kind of shifted from the commercial, or I'm sorry, the residential. There's plenty of property here. It's kind of shifted from the commercial, or I'm sorry, the residential burglaries over to thefts in general, metal thefts, and also some vehicle burglaries. We're seeing about a, a, a seven percent increase in that. But overall, crime is, is going down and doing well. We've also reached out to the community. We've had area meetings in all three parts of the city, pulling the, the community in, find out what the issues are, what they want us to do, how we're being received, and also to start planning for our busy time of year, which is now, is coming up for summer. We also started some new programs, Keep Your Teen Safe, at the local schools. We've done one program in each school, and we followed that up with internet safety. And that Keep Your Teen Safe program is a, a quick program that has about ten or twelve topics for parents and give them further direction on where they need to get that additional information on teen driving, alcohol use, drug use, peer pressure, not just the typical things like the alcohol use. One of the biggest things we're finding of interest is the internet safety, because we're all experiencing that, that have kids, as well as a lot of the teen driving issues. Statistics on that are pretty significant as far as how, what the impact that can have on the youthful community. Also improved the interdepartmental relationships quite a bit with the other city staff. Every time we look at a problem, now we're looking at not just a law enforcement problem, what can we do through enforcement, but how can we work with planning, how can we work with General Services, the Fire Department to address all these problems? And we've used this, this model in dealing with the, the issues at CDM, the parking lot, several issues on the peninsula, as well as some of the alcohol-related issues we've experienced. And that's been very effective. And last, on staffing levels, we had been down in the past, but currently we have four open police officer positions. I anticipate that by the end of the year, we're gonna have another five openings, mostly due to retirements. We have nine people in the pipeline at this point to backfill those positions. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll at least be where we are now. Four positions for the Police Department, it is not really unusual. Most police departments are usually one or two down. We've been, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, we were ten people down. So we've come quite, quite a distance since then. So we've been pretty successful in the past year. Getting into the budget, we're gonna cover a couple of quick things. The, the budget overview, and then revenue will quickly hit on personnel, and then some divisional responsibilities. Not much on the divisional responsibilities, because we believe you know what they are for the most part. Here's our budget total. It's forty-four point seven million dollars. As you can see, the majority of our budget comes from salaries and benefits. Eighty-four percent of our budget is devoted to the salary and benefits of our people. And we are a service-driven department. Our service comes from the people we have in, in the department. They are providing direct service to, to the community. And here's a budget by divisions. You can see eighty-one percent of our people are providing frontline services at the police officers, the traffic officers, the detectives doing a follow-up investigation. Also, our front desk people take the reports, as well as our dispatchers, who take the initial calls for service. We have two hundred and forty-one full-time positions. A hundred and forty-nine of those are police officer positions, and ninety-two of those positions are the non-sworn positions. This is a pretty good mix. It works well for us. And of those ninety-two non-sworn, sixty-three of those positions are in critical assignments that provide a direct service to the community, such as our dispatchers, our records, animal control, parking control, CSI in the jail. Again, they're not support staff. They're actually providing service to the community. And here's a breakdown of all of our full-time employees throughout the department. Again, the three main departments we have, the patrol, traffic, and detectives, and support services, and they're all divisions that provide direct service. And we have two people in fleet services, and ten people in my office that do mostly community relations. On the, on the sworn side, you can see that ninety-two percent of our sworn police officers are providing frontline service. That's the patrol officers again, traffic officers, and detectives. Only eight percent are, are in administrative positions. And this year, I am not asking for any new positions. But let's kind of take a look at the, the budget from last year to this year. You can see we're, most of the increase has been related to salaries and benefits, MOU agreements with the city and the, the employee groups. Our, you can see there's a reduction in our capital outlay from four hundred and twelve to hundred and, I'm sorry, two hundred and ninety-seven. Reduce that by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And one of the things we want to do is come in with as flat a budget as possible. There is an increase of about two hundred and ten thousand in our M and O, and that's mostly related to fuel costs, which are going up for everybody. You'll also see that later on. Vehicle parts and service, some community, increase in community relations. Hope medical expenses, we increased that by sixty-five thousand dollars. There's been some change at the county level about what the county will cover for our prisoners and our inmates. They will cover anybody that gets transported to Orange County Jail, but not all of our arrestees get transported to county jail. So if they need medical treatment now, we're on the hook for that. We're in the process of negotiating with Hope Hospital, try to mitigate that. And we're also working to bill the arrestees themselves and have them use their private insurance. But we expect there is gonna be an increase that we have not experienced in the past. Also, Fourth of July increases. We are increasing, we're asked for a twenty-two thousand dollar increase to the Fourth of July. Currently, the Fourth of July is costing us about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. That's compared to a hundred and forty-three in two thousand and two. And that covers the overtime for our officers, but also the thirty CHP officers that come in, thirty Orange County Sheriff's deputies that come in, and the sixty municipal officers that come in to help us in assist with staffing that day. We also are picking up some of the, the cost for the portable lighting, which have been very successful, as well as some of the barricades. So the costs have been, been increasing, obviously with MOU agreements in other cities as well, but it's been very effective. And with the Fourth of July coming up on a Friday this year, I think we're gonna be prepared, and we have the staffing level to, to meet it head-on. I don't anticipate we're gonna have any significant problems. At least that's my hope at this point. And this is the, the breakdown of the budget by division. Again, mostly employee costs. And here's a breakdown, and we lays out a little bit better what we're doing. As we deal with the MOU, there's the two hundred and nine thousand dollar increase, and part of that is fuel costs, like I said. The whole cost going in Fourth of July. And we did reduce the capital outlay by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That was mostly to, due to one-time purchases that we are not making again. There is no increase to the ABLE budget. About seven years ago, we looked at the ABLE budget and tried to make it flat, so we wouldn't be coming back to you each year with a, a higher or low. We're in the second year of the ABLE budget, which is a helicopter program that we operate with Costa Mesa. So that's falling well within that budget. Just like our own budget, we're experiencing an increase in cost. In oh, oh-seven, the cost for the aviation fuel was two dollars and forty-five cents. They're now paying four dollars and sixty-six cents. So that is, that is hitting our budget, but we're gonna be able to absorb that with some reserve funds that we have. So we're not gonna be coming back to council. And that should carry us through one more year on the ABLE budget. On the revenue end, we expect we're gonna generate about seven point nine million dollars the course of our, the course of the year. Prop one seven-two funds, nine hundred thousand dollars. And the last we get, last word we got from Schwarzenegger, Governor Schwarzenegger, is that he's, he plans on continuing with those funds. There was some discussion about him, those funds being pulled back, but that's not what we're hearing at this point, although it's still too early to tell. We also have alarm permits, false alarm responses, that generates three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And our parking control officers, two and a half million dollars. Our administrative citation estimate is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And again, the administrative citations we use in lieu of tickets that go to court. And we feel that's a better system for us. It doesn't go before a judge. It goes before an administrative hearing officer. The fine's a hundred dollars, and it's much more effective than the going to court and get a, a small fine. Plus, with our administrative citations, they build on each other. So the first one might be a hundred dollars, the next one will be three hundred. And that, that's more effective for some of the repeat customers that we have. Revenue also for the jail booking fees, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Everybody gets convicted in court, has to pay a booking fee. Get three hundred thousand dollars from outside cities that don't participate in the ABLE program and use their helicopter. I believe the fee is twelve hundred dollars an hour, and we recovered three hundred thousand dollars from that. Our school resource officers has split that cost with Newport Unified, Newport Mesa School District. And then we anticipate about sixty-nine, seventy thousand dollars from narcotic acid forfeiture seizures this year. So again, we try to keep the budget as flat as possible. There's nothing significant, no significant changes. We looked at some of the, some of the building, and because we're dealing with some of the issues, and it's up in here exactly what we're gonna do with the building, we've tried to minimize what we're doing with the building. We're making decisions based on being in the building in a short term. One of the, an example is, we're having some issues with the roofs. Rather than looking at repairing the, or replacing the whole roof, we're gonna make some short fixes to, to get us by in the short term. Same with some air conditioning units. Rather than looking at all the air conditions, we're just gonna replace one that covers our computer section, which is our critical area. And I won't go too much into the different duties of these departments. You're aware of most of them. In case I need to talk for a long time, I have plenty of slides. I can go longer if you'd like me to.
I think Mayor Pro Tim Dagel has a question, Chief.
Uh, Chief, question for you. On the CopLink, I would assume that we're continuing that and have, has there been any cooperation from the Sheriff's Department at all? They starting to kind of, are we making any headway in terms of them being part of that system?
Yes, absolutely. The, with Jack Anderson and the new acting sheriff, he committed right away to CopLink. The Board of Supervisors in the last month has agreed to CopLink, and they're coming on as a full partner. And CopLink, along with the integrated law and justice system, is reaching out. We're now connected to the City of Los Angeles and their police department, the County of Los Angeles, San Diego, and we're negotiations for a couple of other states. So the system is continuing to spread, and the information base we're getting is tremendous. Recruitment, again, real fast. We've tested five hundred and twenty police officers since January of '07. We fired fourteen. And we're continuing, we test monthly, so we can make sure we get the top candidates. Last time, I believe, we had sixty, sixty people participate in the testing process. And again, we're hiring about one and a half percent of the entry-level academy people. We have six people in the, in the pipeline right now to start the academy. So we're in good shape as far as that. I already talked about some of the accomplishments from last year. And the lobby remodel is almost done. It will be done, guaranteed it will be done before the Fourth of July. So they got the tile in. It's looking pretty good, so we're pretty close to that. And on the benchmarking, these are the three categories that we've elected to benchmark. One of them is police investigations. We're gonna look at how many investigations we get and how they're handled, what the resolution of those investigations are, basically what our clearance rate is, how many do we solve, how many arrests are, are made behind it, how many are left open. Crime prevention, how, how are we getting at the community, how many meetings do we have, how effective is our crime prevention? And our emergency response is gonna deal with our highest priority calls, how we respond to them, how many we had in the year, and what our response time is. Last time we checked, our response time was right about four minutes for, as an average, for every emergency call. Some of them faster than that, and that, that's pretty standard.
Okay. Any other questions for the Chief?
I just want to thank you for the quality of life efforts you've made. I think everybody appreciates that in our city.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Oh, you do have one?
Yeah. I'd like to second that. I attended the community meeting last week in Area One, I guess. So I thought it was good, and you did get some good, some positive, good feedback on that. I'm, I'm gonna posit something to you, and then you tell me if I'm wrong. Patrol salaries are up almost ten percent in this budget. Traffic salaries are up almost thirteen percent. There's been no change in the number of positions. I'm going to posit that that's because you've got more people now in actual, actually filling the positions, because you're at, you're better up to speed. I'm also going to posit that it's because you've got fewer officers in training. In other words, that are paired up with another officer, where in effect, you don't get the benefit of that additional officer, at least not a full benefit, even though he's on the payroll. Am I just sort of directionally on target there?
Yes. You know, when we were down, patrol was taking probably the biggest hit as far as some of the positions not being filled, as well as, as traffic. And we recently just added an additional motor spot that we had not, that had been unfilled, as well as a traffic investigator spot. So now we are up to speed. We have four people, four openings. We only have two people in the academy. They're both due to come out in July. And we only have four people in training. So you're right, we have more people on the street.
So let me come around to my point. In the, in the most recent service survey, resident survey that was done, one of the things that did read through fairly clear was a fairly strong feeling, at least on the part of some residents, particularly in the older areas of the city, the peninsula and Corona del Mar, about the need for increased neighborhood patrols. And what, I guess I have two questions for you. Have you had, have you had the chance to evaluate that? Do we have a need, and can it be filled? And secondly, do you, because you have now more people that are fully trained out there, does that create flexibility, actually, to assign more resources to increase neighborhood patrols, particularly as you've heard the other night, in the late-at-night weekend hours where people really seem to have the most disturbance?
Yeah, we, we are addressing that, the neighborhood visibility issue. And when I got from the survey, it wasn't necessarily that, that we weren't there enforcing the issue that needed to be enforced. They didn't see us enough. It was, it was neighborhood visibility. So we're looking at a couple of different things. One of the reasons, one of the things we're doing to try to, to deal with the neighborhood visibility is make sure that the area officers are known to the community. So that if they have a, a problem in your area, you don't have to wait for an officer to go by. You don't even have to call the Police Department. You know you can call for Area One, Bill Hartford, or one of the pop sergeants, and deal with that long-term issue specifically. And we're also looking at ways of getting to the community, and we did that in CDM. CDM, we had people there throughout the night, but we still got complaints that, you know, we weren't being visible, we weren't there enough. We actually moved our bicycle officers over CDM, so dinnertime hours when most people are out, so they could be seen. And so we're dealing with, with the perception of whether we're really in the neighborhoods or, or not in dealing with the issue. So, yeah, we are looking at that, and I think one of the ways we're trying to do it is to make the officers known to the community, so they can have that close contact, and they feel like they have somebody in their area. And we also have the flexibility now, if we have a specific area, a specific problems, we can move groups of officers to deal, deal with those issues, whether it's a, a party house or an ongoing theft problem might be occurring in a specific area. But I gotta tell you, the peninsula is our heaviest covered area, and we have more staffing down here than anyplace else.
No, I'm, I'm well aware of that, and I know the residents appreciate it. And there's been positive feedback from what's happened, particularly the, the patrols in the bar areas and whatnot, where there's been bad visibility. But, and I also agree that it's important to address the perception of whether or not you're there. But beyond that, though, there is the substance of whether you're there more often. And so, in light of what I perceive to be more actual capability here, because, not because you have more people, but because you have more fully-trained people, I'd still encourage you to have a look at whether or not there can be actual, more actual resources dedicated to these critical weekend, late-night hours, you know, that we heard about.
Okay. Any other questions with Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think this is a good place to stop for your closed session, and we should be able to accomplish the rest of the budget reviews. If not the next time, then early the second meeting in July, June.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vidal. Any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we're adjourned to closed session. Oh, excuse me, we're, have a question here on item number five on the consent calendar.
Yeah, if you could just kind of explain slurs and what they meant on this property and any possible impact with the future.
Sure. Councilmember Dagel asked me to, earlier, told me that she had a question and thought it might be helpful if I clarified for the consent calendar item number five, which is the termination of the option agreement, to the extent that the council might have heard issues or have questions about the concept-
or have questions about the concept of the Irvine Company placing slurs, which I don't even remember what that stands for, but they're basically...
Specific land use restrictions.
Yeah, okay, there we go. Land use restrictions on the properties that they, they usually, they do this in the context of properties that they sell. In the particular case of the property that they dedicated to the city, the only land use restrictions, particularly under the new amended grant deed that they provided to us, are that the property can only be used for open space and public facilities. So that's the only restriction on this particular property.
Okay, thank you, and now we're adjourned to closed session.